All right, tonight is September 8th, 2020. We'll be having a work session of the Stafford County School Board. If you all will look over the agenda and if there's a motion to approve.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will be focusing on the capital improvement program, the CIP, and the infrastructure three R list. So who's going to take it away first? Come on down.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Hazard, members of the school board. Dr. Kizner, tonight we're going to go over the proposed CIP and three R. Okay, so want to start off first with our enrollment projections in the CIP. And student enrollment grew by 635 students from 2018 to the 2019 school year. That's an increase of about 2.1% growth year over year. The 2019 forecast, which was done last September, or I should say last November, predicts that K-12 enrollment will grow approximately 4,800-plus students. And of that, about 1,800 students at the elementary level, about 950 at the middle school level, and another 2,000-plus at the high school level. And so this data tells us that more seats are needed to accommodate future students. Enter COVID-19 pandemic. So staff anticipates that in the short term, we will see a drop in enrollment. Our preliminary data is telling us that. Particularly, we're seeing drops at the elementary level. However, as many of you've probably seen in your neighborhoods, the real estate market is extremely hot right now, which is sort of odd, but it's happening. And some data I want to share with you. If in comparing March of last year, March through August of last year with this year, to give you a baseline, there were three more housing starts this year than for the same time period last year, which is surprising to me. Also, there were, this is bigger surprise, 210 more home sales for the same time period. And those real estate geeks out there, the average days on the market decreased 30%. So that tells us the market is really hot. Stuff's coming on and it's going off faster. So we're looking at this data saying, well, a lot of these homes are single-family homes, and we're expecting students to come, a yield of students to come from these homes. Okay, so our capital improvement program is our budgeting and planning tool. It's a 10-year plan, and it deals with large capital projects. And it also deals with our three R list. Our three R is the repair, replace, and rehabilitation schedule. Of course, our large capital projects are new school construction additions and so forth. Projects are identified in the CIP based on educational policy standards, of course, school board priorities, available funding, existing facility conditions. That has to do more with three R. And of course, the need to accommodate current and projected students. So what we have here now is our prioritized large capital projects list. So this is important because, you know, the purpose of tonight's meeting, we need to go through this list and make sure we're all in, we're all on in some type of, hopefully, agreement consensus with the ranking of the projects and the need for these projects in the CIP. I'll start off first, again, this is staff's proposed, is we have high school number six. That will give us 2,150 seats. We're asking that it open in August 2025 at a cost of 141 million. That's our top-ranked project, followed by elementary school 18, which will yield 964 more seats, followed by the additional early childhood special education. This is pre-K capacity. We're going to add 10 classrooms, that's the goal. Next, we have the Drew Middle School renovation. That will yield 63 seats. If I step back a little bit, those 10 classrooms are going to yield about 80 students. Special ed classrooms on average yield about eight per classroom. Next, we have our Hartwood renovation. That isn't going to yield any seats. That's fifth on our list, followed by the North Stafford High School renovation, the Fine Arts Wing, again, a yield of zero seats. And last on our list is high school number seven. This project was in the county CIP. I guess in looking at our projections, the data clearly shows that in the out years, closer to year 10, we're going to be above the 90% capacity threshold, which would trigger a new school coming online. So that's why we see this in our large capital projects list. Okay, the other part of the CIP is our repair, replacement, rehabilitation projects, also known as three R. So these are typically small-scale projects, and they extend the life of an asset, but not fundamentally changes purpose. And in our three R list, we have funding categories. Bond proceeds, three R set-aside funds, nutrition capital account, and unfunded. So for the current school year, and that is fiscal year 2021, this is our three R project list. So these are actual projects, and in August, the school board voted to approve bonds to, for these projects. So these will look very familiar to you. And here in list here, we see the project type, where it's located, the funding source, and the estimated cost. And I won't go through each line, but the information is there. And it continues here. And we see here at the bottom that there's a total funding need of 8.8 million for the current year. Of that, about 2.2 million is unfunded. And we see that nutrition has about 125,000. It's not very much. Most of our funding comes through bond funding. So now I'm going to talk to you very briefly about our proposed three R infrastructure fund. So this is not actual, this is next year and beyond. And what I wanted to do here was bring this information to you very high level. So what we have here is the fiscal year, the bonds, the amount of funding from bonds, the funding from three R set-asides, nutrition, unfunded projects, and then the grand total, so you can see the total cost. So for example, in FY 2022, which is next school year, there's a grand total cost of 13.5 million of proposed infrastructure funds needed. And if you go year by year, you can see that number into the future. And one other thing I want to point out is, we also have as an attachment, and you probably have received, a copy of our CIP report. So if you want specific details about any year, the individual projects, that information's in the three R section of the CIP report.
I just had a question about that previous slide. So do we honestly think that our three R infrastructure needs are going to decline?
No.
Because the chart shows that, right? It shows that this year we need 13 point, or 2022, we need 13.5 million. But then for some reason, in 2028, we only need 3 million. So just, just out of curiosity, what's going on that we see that? Is it just we can't forecast that what, what's going to break and is going to then be added? Or just what's going on there?
I think that's a, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah. If you notice the, it's the unfunded part that changes the most. And we're actually front-loading it, so we have a lot of these unfunded projects over the most recent years. And then they typically don't all get funded, so they get kind of kicked to the next year. So that's the logic. And there were quite a few placeholder projects. When we cleaned this up, there were projects that weren't really specific. So there will likely be some projects that are added over time, and that gives us some space to put them in future years.
Right, but are we going across the street trying to tell the supervisors that in 2028, we're only going to need $3 million?
No, the, well, I mean, in the, if you look at the categories, if you go back to the, I see what you mean about that.
Yeah, that was my only concern, is I don't want to be claiming that, that. At any rate, I think you get the gist of what I'm, of what I'm.
Yeah, and there are quite a few unfunded projects, so that's where we would make up the difference. But I get your point. And again, we're trying to make this more realistic than it has been. There were many, many more projects on the list than have been funded in the past. And so it's been this constant movement of a massive number of projects shifted to the next year. We're trying to make it more predictable, especially for the principals, so they can count on when we have a project planned in a certain year. So we are trying to leave some. And the list will keep growing because our buildings keep getting older as well.
So maybe we want to put a, you know, Ms. Bomke, she loves footnote. But we might want some clarification that, that we anticipate that, you know, that this is a projection and that, you know, out beyond X number of years, the projection is less.
Yes.
I don't know, something.
We can add a clarification for that, for sure.
If I could also, on that, say, and maybe Mr. Fulmer and Mr. Anderson can say, with the unfunded number, we have unfunded, and let's just pick 2022, $5.8 million. Probably over the last couple of years, we probably have an idea that probably 3 million of that maybe doesn't get funded. Mr. Fulmer, I'm making a huge, wild guess, but, but somehow to mark saying, out of those unfunded projects, you know, if I'm thinking that we, and I'm just very, being very broad, if we used, you know, end-of-year money, a million, a million five, we'd still be at like 4 million of unfunded. It's how we roll that. I mean, I understand the concept, but I'm like, is there a way to say, you know? I hate using avera, you've come up, come up with, but unfunded projects generally every year, we're only able to fund 1.2, 2.2.
Sure.
I don't know, is that helpful? Or, I mean, do you see that?
Yeah, I think we, I think we can work something in there. It's a good point. If you look at this most recent year-end, we weren't able to fund any of those items on there because of the uncertainties that we had, which is part of the reason why, and I think this is what John was getting at, because we haven't been able to hit those unfunded and they just keep building, the front, it's a little bit front-loaded. So by the time we get to FY 25, these items that are unfunded in 22, 23, they're going to get pushed. And to Ms. Hazard's point, that $3 million that doesn't get funded in FY 21, 22, those are going to get pushed the next year. So it's, it's kind of piled in the beginning because we're dealing with the past 10 years of unfunded items that have built up in the most recent years.
Right, but I would, I would be surprised if you don't find that there's going to be like a snowball of, I mean, like that, that there are going to be more things. And I just worry that, that that isn't necessarily communicated in, in this. But I mean, I'm thrilled with the amount of information that is here. I'm just saying there could be a little more information to.
Yeah.
That 5.8 unfunded.
FY 22, how much is that from previous things that were not funded approximately?
I don't know offhand, but I guarantee you it's a lot of it.
I was wondering too. We can anticipate that a roof has a life expectancy. If you look at these lists of three R projects, they're often very similar. We have to replace chillers, we have to replace HVAC, we have to replace roofs. Can we kind of anticipate that some of our buildings are going to be ready for their next roof or ready for their next HVAC system, so that we can maybe try to preload those later years?
Yeah, and that's what, that's what this list is, and there's still some uncertainty related to that. But that's generally how, how these lists are created as we go through there. A lot of the bond-funded projects are the, the roofs that we know are going to have to get replaced. You know, if you don't take care of the roof, everything inside of it is going to be sacrificed at some point. So that's usually a high priority.
So I'm just, so in terms of presentation, if I have, so let's say unfunded this year is 5.8 million. So how, that 12.3 that's on the next line, does that include that 5.8 that was unfunded?
It does not.
So maybe we should have a line that shows that. So there's the grand total, but here's the cumulative total.
Of the unfunded added, yeah.
Right, that every year, if this isn't being funded, then this number is getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
I agree. That actually would be great to show, I agree with you.
And possibly maybe, and I'm not saying, you know, going back two years using similar, using these same numbers and showing, maybe just in that column of the unfunded, what ended up being truly unfunded, if that makes any sense, what I'm saying.
Right.
You know, because it would just show a year or two of prior history, not just projection.
Sure.
Because that may help frame some of what Dr. Chase is trying to say. So it, it shows maybe 18, 19, 20, I don't know what, I defer to you all, but just to use then some real numbers to show them.
Yeah, I think if we show a history, a three-year history would be good.
Might be helpful. Any other questions about this proposed three R infrastructure funds slide, since we have this one up?
I was just going to wait until we were done with the presentation.
No, no, I was just.
Before we start asking questions.
Sure. I was just going to say, does anybody have any more suggestions on this particular slide, since I think we started in on.
Yeah, no, the only questions I had was, are you done with cleaning it up?
I'm sorry.
Are you done cleaning, cleaning the three R list up?
It's going to continue every year. I mean, there's, we've done a major, we've done a lot of work this year. This will be an ongoing process. Every year, we'll need to do a lot of work on the three R list.
The only reason why I'm asking that is because numbers change once you start cleaning them up. And I, what I don't want is the board of supervisors to see one number one day and say, I recall this was this, and you know, the, the numbers are not matching, this is what I saw. That's another thing that I think we need to make sure that we let them know.
Sure.
That it's ongoing, it's fluid, and as things fix, things drop off or things become emergency, that we show that.
Right, that's something we could add a note to clarify as well.
Dr. Chase, did you, oh, I'm sorry. I have one on the three R set-aside. Sorry, Mr. Fulmer, I know you wanted to sit down, but you probably are going to be back for this one. When we're talking about the three R set-aside money, is that board of supervisors' money, or is this that requirement that they've been requesting for years? What was it, 2%? I'm just trying to make sure I'm not mixing.
So it's money they started setting aside for us to try to meet that 2% requirement because we weren't able to do it out of our actual local operating dollars because we were using it for running the, the day-to-day operations of the school division. So if you recall, a couple of years ago, when we got additional state money very late in the process, they took the one point, it's actually up to 1.445 each year. And one of the things that we challenge with each year is, you know, so as you see, that's 1446. So we can go over a little bit, we've got a little bit of money left over from '20 or '21. You know, you see '23 is a little bit below that, and that's because trying to find a project that is exactly, you know, the difference between 1445 and 1375, we don't have projects that are exactly $75,000 or $65,000. So there's going to be a little bit up and down, and, and the county works with us. That money doesn't go away, it just goes into our capital reserve fund each year if we don't spend it, which then would be able to be used in the following year.
And is that in their financial policies, that the number is 1.45? Or is it based on revenue, like, is it a percentage?
It's just a set dollar amount right now.
Hoping to go for a percentage, because if we're increasing revenues, hopefully, that's the goal in general, it would be nice to be working more towards a percentage of revenue as opposed to just, because, and I'm not the good time value money and all those other things that you all are better at, but 1.445 or 1.45 is going to go less, further less and, less and less further, I don't know, whichever way I'm going, as we get to 2027. So I wonder if we should asterisk that, that that's based on the county's current policy? Because that would be certainly something, if, as we all know with the growth that was just presented to us, many times we are always told how much growth can also increase revenue, that it just seems we might want to be working, it's more setting the stage to have a discussion of maybe not a set figure, maybe a percent, but.
Sure.
We've been arguing, we've been talking about that for years. And can I? Dr. Chase? And that just brought to mind too, when you're looking at these unfunded projects that then get pushed aside, will inflation increase the cost of actually doing those projects?
Yeah, so, so an unfunded project in 2022 that's not completed until 2025 is going to cost more in 2025 than it does in 2022.
So if you're putting together this cumulative kind of thing, either, either, either correct, put a correction in for inflation or say you've, you don't, you expect, anticipate, you know, the footnote about it's not there or it is there?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we use a standard rate for infla?
We do in the CIP, and for years, one through three, John, you recall? It's in our CIP document, I know. I don't recall what the percentages are offhand, and in the later years, it's a slightly different percentage. I can get it to you before Lionel's even done with the next couple of slides.
And please, no, I, we're just trying to work with, and I appreciate, and I think all board members do, the, the information here. I think we're trying to just make sure that we are presenting the fullest picture and most accurate picture about the needs of the school division, which I think are many. And we want to make sure that we don't think that they're going to taper off. So that's really just, it's not the information, it's how are we going to really communicate that, which I think we all agree.
Years one through three are at 4.5%, and years four through 10 are at 3%. And those are inflation rates provided by the, the county.
I have a question, maybe Chris or maybe the school board knows. The 1.4 million, you're saying that's the set-aside?
Yes.
How long has that 1.4 been in place? Has that?
Just two years.
Okay. Okay, see, and I brought you 1.4. So, and then the other question is, is there like an industry standard of a percentage of an operating budget that should be looked at as a percentage to help with the capital budget?
Yeah, I know that's something we've looked at. And so the, the county tries to do 2% per year invested back into, that's actually in their policy, I think. Is it 2% or 3%? It might be 3%. And they were asking us to do the same, and we could actually never achieve that because, you know, 3% of a $300 million budget is pretty tough to do, and we have pressing needs in the operating budget. So that 1.445 wasn't even trying to meet that percentage. It just happened to be that when the state budget was increased after we adopted a budget, instead of giving it to our, towards our operating budget, they said, hey, we're going to, we'll set this aside each year for you, this 1.445, and you guys can, the school board can decide which capital projects to use it on for the three R projects.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Mr. White.
Oh, no problem. This is great. Okay, so now we're on our other unfunded improvement requests, and we see the project type and the estimated cost. Okay, so upcoming important dates. Of course, if you look at the county's CIP documentation, the expectation is that we would have our large capital projects approved today. I think that's their expectation. Moving forward, October 20th, we'll have a joint board supervisors, school board meeting. And November 10th, staff will submit this year's projections to the technology, technical review committee. December 1st, there'll be the second joint school board meeting. And of course, April 20th of 2021, the county will adopt its budget and CIP. So now time for questions and discussion.
Ms. Anderson, you want to start us?
Yeah.
But the only question I had was, when you mentioned that the forecast predicting that it would be probably a 4,000 or 5,000 students don't have to take away from you.
You start again, because my volume was down. So the forecast says that we predict 4,812 students or 16% system-wide increase. What I wanted to know, I, I don't want to decrease any students from our pool, but I did hear from a lot, you know, neighbors sometimes talking about, you know, if we're going to be in COVID age, is this a true percentage that we have? And if not, how do we rectify that with the ADM? This could possibly a question for Dr. Kizner, not necessarily for you, but I was just wondering if that's something that we need to take into consideration at all.
Yeah, if I could sort of jump in, in terms of projections, you know, they're a guesstimate into the future. And right now, quite honestly, we don't know if this is like the new COVID age. I mean, we're all expecting that there will be some vaccine to come shortly. And, you know, under that assumption, we're assuming that a lot of the students, and again, most of our students that haven't shown up have been elementary kids. We're expecting a lot of them to come back. So we sort of see this as a temporary blip. And so when you do projections, you know, one year doesn't make a trend. It's particularly a year that's an anomaly. So I'm not too excited about everything falling off a cliff, quite honestly. I do think that, I'm, I guess I'm a half-full kind of person, but I do think that we are going to have our students come back as soon as this COVID issue is resolved.
And just so you know, some of these questions I ask, and I know what the answers are, but there's a public out there.
Yes.
And I also want them to hear that, and of course, the board of supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any question, any questions to my right? Dr. Chase? Yeah, so I guess I'm a little curious about, I see the 947 more middle school students.
Yes.
Would you know offhand how many empty seats we have in middle school currently?
Middle school currently, let me take a look. I know that.
Like how much room do we have? Like of those 947 students that we project for 20, 29, 30, how many more seats do we need in order to actually have those 947 students have a place? Does that make sense? Like, I know that we have some empty seats right now, just how many do we have?
Right, so this is just sort of off the top of my head, but I'm certain that at the high school level, we're already over 90%. That's why high school six is in the mix. And I believe at middle school, we're probably 88% towards that 90%. So 10 years out, if we're adding 900-plus more students additional, that's suggesting that we're going to have a need for another middle school. So I know we're really close if we're not at.
So, so the reason I'm asking is just, you know, we have Drew down as the, the fourth project on the list, and we have it only adding, the renovation only adding 63 seats. There's a lot of land at Drew, and we are also using some of the seats at Drew for the Heather M. Field Day School. So I'm just wondering if there's been any thought as to whether the Drew Middle School renovation could actually include an addition that would perhaps solve this problem of 947 students? Since nowhere on here do we have a middle school, an additional middle school. We have two high schools, but we have no middle school seats being added other than 63 at Drew in 2028. And so I'm just wondering about that. And I'm also wondering about the priority of it being behind early childhood special education capacity. So just a question. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of personally thinking that we may need middle school seats before we're going to need those seats. If we put an additional elementary school in, we could conceivably use some of that space for early childhood if we needed to. And I'm just concerned about how we get the middle school seats.
Well, Drew also has a design capacity of 650. So as far as middle schools go, it's one of our smaller middle schools. And if there's more land there, then it's possible, in addition, or even moving the day school might be a good option for us to improve and increase those number of seats.
What, what is the appetite for the board of supervisors? What is the appetite for the board of supervisors on this elementary school 18? Is that something that is going to happen? Is that, because it's sitting as number two?
I think so, I think so.
This is something that they would.
And I do think it's needed.
Yeah, of course, of course. I mean, this is something, the middle school, I'm sure, I remember asking this question back when, because that's what I'm thinking is déjà vu. My question was, you know, do people get into elementary school and jump to high school? Remember that comment I made? And I'm like, okay, what about the middle school? So it's very important that we take a look at that also, and especially if the correlation between where these houses are being built in the South correlate, that that could be a good reason why Drew should have this expansion, and expand on the fact that they have, we already have land there.
Yeah.
I can answer that. We are going to do a full analysis for middle schools and decide where do we recommend the seats be added and how. There's not a lot of land to add on at Drew, and there is an addition included in the project, it's for the music expansion. Those are the seats that we're getting back when the music moves to the addition, then we're going to be turning those spaces into general classrooms. But there's not a lot of room to add seats there. We've talked about different ways of doing that, and so we decided rather than coming up with something really quickly, just to, you know, show an idea for that, we want to be more thoughtful and do a full study of how to add the middle school seats. So that's the, that's the next step. We just were not able to get it done quickly enough to include in this report.
So John, when you say you're doing the analysis, are you also looking at where individuals are right now and where they live, and should they be in those schools? Is that what you're looking at also?
We're going to look at all of that.
Okay, okay, just checking.
Yeah, we're definitely looking at that, and also, there is information in the actual CIP report on capacity, it's, I believe it's page 36. So it shows sort of the schools in need, how many seats are, well, it shows with the color, the utilization percentage. And to continue what John said, that process, we'll have that, we'll have a process internally this school year with the academic chiefs, particularly the middle school academic chief on options to increase seats at the middle school level, which approaches, we want to come up with multiple approaches so that we bring more than just one thing for you to consider.
Chairwoman, Hazard, when you have on the funding source, if it's blank, like say, for example, in St. Kitchen AC5 schools, is it because it was already done?
No.
Well, it doesn't say unfunded, it's blank.
It's unfunded on the 3R list?
When it's blank?
It shouldn't be.
There's a cup. Yep, and it is blank.
We'll fix that.
All right, no biggie. Okay.
Any other questions? I have a few, so. So, Mr. White, this big one for me is always projections and how we, you know, move forward with those. Are we still expecting projections to be sometime in like November timeframe? That, so they're going to be submitted, can they be presented, please, to the school board before they are sent to the TRC?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we should see them. And then how, and I don't think I've been here when we've had one, how is, how does the census impact projections, or do they at all? I don't know the answer, so I truly am asking because I don't know.
Right. I mean, they can, quite honestly, I mean, we have a lot of really good data. I mean, the census is sort of a survey, but we have like actuals, so we know when kids come to school, we have 350 pieces of data on students. So, I mean, the stuff we have is really good. Also, we have really good housing information from our county, very detailed, we get monthly updates. So, I mean, I'll look to census to see if there's some value there, but quite honestly, a lot of the stuff we have internally in the county and school system is really good.
And in that, in that vein, there was, there was a time when there was a, and it was calculated by the county of housing types, like a single-family home tends to generate one point some per child. And then it would be interesting to see if that has been updated, because what I'm seeing in some of those documents that even were presented to the board of supervisors, we're growing. I mean, you pointed out some of the, you know, but the pace of new home construction is exceeding the comprehensive plan, you know, projections. These were just from some of the board of supervisors, you know, these are some big numbers.
Yes.
And will we still, and Dr. Kistner will know whether this has been waived, is there still going to be a September 30 number this year calculated, or somehow I may have gotten lost in how that's going to be done?
The General Assembly has not changed that number.
I mean, I do think that's still a good number for us to just see where we are, because going to some of the comments about middle school and high school, are we on track in those areas? Because I think those numbers are going to continue to rise.
Yes, I agree with you, and sort of looking at some of the preliminary enrollment data with our projections, right now, we're about 900 students off, it fluctuates daily. But the majority of that, 80% of the error in the projection, or the difference from projection, comes at the elementary level. If you look at middle and high, it's pretty close. So we are very confident that at least at middle and high, the projections are going to sort of look good. However, at elementary, it's going to be a little different this year because of COVID-19, and we have a plan to figure out how we're going to move forward when we do our projections in November.
And with regard to the early childhood special education, are those students still tracking as we, and I know that's going to be sort of early information, just going a little bit to Dr. Chase's point of sort of the priority there, not, for me, for all of us, most everything on here is a priority, it's how do we prioritize priorities? So I think that would be a piece of information that would be helpful to me to sort of figure out where do we go, because if, if asked, I understand the need to plan for high school seven, I just hope we get high school six at the moment, so I'm sort of more focused on that. But I do feel that the middle school piece, I just don't feel like we address it on here, or we, or we don't look like we're having those discussions. Hartwood, look, that's a school, I believe renovating with zero seats is very difficult, because we can't expand there because of the water and such. So, you know, that's problematic, you know, there's part of me that looks at this as, do we need an elementary 19 on here instead, and a middle school? I mean, if I had to say what I think we may need before high school seven, just based on sort of what I'm looking at, those would be two things that I think we're going to have to explain if that's not what our recommendation is, because the elementary students are tracking like 1,800, if high school 2,000, that's still a lot of kids, and when they're talking about these new housing starts, they're bringing kids. And they're going to be all ages, and I just feel like I don't want COVID to be used as an excuse to slow us down when I actually think Stafford is speeding up in terms of house sales and other things. So it will be interesting to find out, I guess, when we get to that September 30 number, where we are. But if you're asking sort of my reaction to this, that's my struggle with, not that I don't think we will need a high school seven, however, and this is just me speaking, high school seven may look different than high school six, potentially in 10 years, we may be having some delivery models that may potentially use less space. So I, I sort of want to grapple with that, but I don't think we're going to deliver elementary, or even some extent, middle school much differently. But those would just be my comments. Any other comments or requests for any information from staff, because this will be on for, it is on for information tonight, really, I, my plan was just to refer to tonight's work session, if anybody wants to make any comments, but otherwise, I was going to defer to our conversation here, unless there's, you know, some things tonight. But if there's any additional information, please make sure that we get that to staff now, or within the next day or so, if you have something that will help with your decision in two weeks.
Madam Chair, I think Lionel mentioned that this was something that needed to be approved, right? And it's on information for tonight. Is there any way that we could maybe discuss of getting this moved, instead of just having this information?
I mean, Dr. Warner and I both had discussed whether we thought we could slide this a week, just because there had not been any discussion. I mean, if, if the board is ready to vote tonight, you can move it to action. I'm just letting you know where I am, that I know I cannot approve what's, these projects in this order tonight, but if there is a consensus of four.
I was just asking what the.
I just felt that there needed to be some discussion, and that's why I also did want to share with you that document from the board of supervisors about their growth. That's why I wanted to share that, because I think that's interesting, additional information.
Sure.
Ms. Rynne?
Madam Chair, if we're wanting to have a discussion, at what point in this discussion are we going to, either tonight or some other night, are we going to reprioritize or discuss reprioritizing this CIP list?
I mean, I'm open for suggestions here, because I know many times the FAB takes another look at this, and they will be meeting Monday, next Monday. So many times that comes out of the FAB, so I would say if you have some discussions, that's why I went ahead and at least voiced some of my.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay, so maybe a recommendation will come out of that?
I don't think voting on it the 22nd is going to have a huge impact on our transferring the information to the county, since they've already got the plans for all the projects and all the detailed information, correct?
The county, they don't have.
They have this.
So we have provided, you know, some of that summary data that provide them ahead of time, so they can start pulling it together. They are looking at rolling into the TRC committee and providing it to those TRC committee members, so they can start reviewing the projects. So it could cause delays in that process. If, if you're not comfortable, I would just maybe recommend that either you authorize Dr. Kistner to send a letter over, letting them know, hey, respect that we had a deadline of today, but we still want to put a lot of thought into this and, and have some other tweaks to that, so that they know that we're still working on it, and hopefully they can appreciate the due diligence.
For me, I'm, my only reservation about it is simply the, the order in terms of priority between the special ed and the middle school. And some of that, it sounds like you all are working on that, and that's something that's planned for this year, and so maybe next year, you would provide the information that might result in a reordering of that. So I could probably approve it as is, with maybe a footnote in here noting that, you know, that there may be some movement of, of the projects that are not our first two priorities, or something along that line.
With a show of hands, like, why would we be opposed to switching them out, knowing that we need middle school and we're in COVID, and I don't know how many kids are at the special education center right now? Like, who is opposed to switching them here on the board?
I think what Mr. White says can't, you know, has to be remembered that one year, let's, but from my experience, COVID or not COVID, we are having live birth rates in Stafford, we're having growth. If you look at Ms. Hazard's report that she sent, what Lionel started off, a percentage of that will be children with disabilities. Those children by, they deserve, I hate to say it's by law, because they should get it anyway, so I don't think that COVID would impact it. I would offer, maybe offer, that, you know, we're looking at 26, 28, you do have plenty of time to change it, but I would also suggest, you know, it maybe doesn't have to be an either or, maybe the advocacy is an end, we need both of these at a certain date, and just have the data to support your decision, and besides, not necessarily flipping it.
So I want to make sure that you're not saying that I'm thinking that special education is not important. All I'm saying is that where we are today, and especially that we have Garrison Vale, we have a lot of room there in case emergency, that we need space. I'm not saying that it's not important. Equally important, I agree with you.
Well, I'm not suggesting you're saying that, but what I am suggesting is that if, that if you believe as a board, so I will personally tell you, I think Drew Middle School needs to be moved up quicker. I've been in that building enough. I would invite any and all of us to visit it, and I think you may come to that same conclusion. But anyway, that's a whole nother discussion. But I do, would just say, you know, last year, the board agreed on one and two. That's pretty much what you really agreed on. Everything else was put on a list, and those two are, seem to have the board of supervisors support at this point.
I think, yeah, my concern is just that last year, we agreed on one and two, and what went across the street had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and it was implied that that was the priority. So my concern is I don't want to be taking this across the street, saying that I'm putting Drew fourth, and I'm putting early childhood special education additional classes third. I mean, I'm fine if what you're actually going to take across the street says one and two are our top priorities, and the other X number are also priorities, we're still doing, you know, research or background to decide where these things need to go, but what happened last year is what was actually presented was a prioritized list.
And then we did not approve that. We sent everything that was priority one and two.
Let me ask. Go ahead, Ms. Rynne.
The one thing I would like to add, as a footnote, if you will, is that when I was looking over, Lionel directed us to page 36 and 37, and when I noticed that, and I'm sure this will come out in your information when you share with us too, Dixon Smith Middle School with a design capacity of 1,100, even all the way out to 29, 30, still stands at 778. So we're talking hundreds of seats available if we, if we get into a pinch with, in regard to middle school. Not enough for what we're eventually, but I'm just saying, just as a little footnote.
And just noticed that you have five middle schools that are at or over capacity.
Yes, right.
So there's going to have to be some.
Some shift at some point, correct. But one of the things that I feel I'm not comfortable doing, is I'm not comfortable saying one and two, yes, and then the group send the rest not prioritized. I feel like it's our, I mean, honestly, in watching the CIP, I mean, they like to work in large year increments in setting it, but I've seen projects go from, well, very far, go from a rebuild to a renovate in a CIP in a short year timeframe. And so to me, I want to go ahead and set a priority for us of all of our projects, in knowing the same footnote applies to us as it does to the whole county CIP, in that there are sometimes there is more data that comes forward that says, oh, okay, now, especially after COVID, or I don't even care what you want to call it. But I just think that it's our job, let's do the full job, and send over some, we need, we just can't be wishy-washy. We need to be certain about what we're sending, we need to be certain about what we're defending and what we're advocating for, and that's just my thoughts.
Well, then, in that case, I would like to see those two items switched.
And let me make, let me make a, I know I could be comfortable with the first four projects. I have no concerns that we need those. Now, would I like an asterisk next to Drew, saying we would really like to figure out a way to be more than 63, and saying we're thinking creatively, or whatever wording you want to use, because I truly think that number needs to be higher, showing what the middle school is, like those top four. The next section to me, though.
The next section to me though, dealing with middle school, if not dealt with, with the asterisk with Drew, has to be dealt with somewhere. And I really feel like in elementary school, we may need a, a new elementary school. So I just need to tell you, the final three, these are not things I don't like, I don't want. But if I had to go and defend and say what I think we as a school would like to send over is four priority projects. Like I said, for me, I'd like an asterisk on Drew's somewhere along the line of saying, we'd love it to have more capacity. And we need to think creatively of how to deal with the middle school. Because we may or may not need a new middle school, but I do think we have to have some solution of what we're going to do with the middle school students. And then truly, I believe when you're thinking you'll have 1,800, which is two elementary schools in 10 years, it's hard for me not to see elementary with any capacity added. So, I mean, if you were asking sort of mine, that's sort of where I would be tonight. That, or, you know, would, will probably be in two weeks as well. But I could get to the four and then as, and it's my supervisor who always says, the CIP is a fluid document. We do need to see what some of the upcoming numbers are. But for me, the current numbers, last year's numbers and probably the numbers before, support the top four. Oh wait, let me, let me go to Dr. Warner first and then come back.
I think that universally, I think in all of our discussions on the CIP, we've all kind of agreed on those first four projects is, is critical. And I think that we do need to consider more capacity in our middle schools, especially with the growing, with the, the growth as anticipated. The early childhood education, if we're expecting two elementary schools worth of students, we can anticipate that we're probably going to have an increase in early education as well. So I can see keeping these first four projects as they are with the asterisks that we are, we need to expand capacity in the middle school and we're looking at Drew. But the other three projects, I do have to agree with you, Madam Chair, that those are, are going to have to be evaluated next year or even the year after as we've got more data.
Ms. Healy?
Report when this comes back about what additional capacity we would gain at Drew if the middle, um, the day school were not there. I know that, you know, we've, we were creative with the Phoenix Center. We rented the space, you know, on 17. It's working out great as far as I know. It may be a situation that we're going to have to, to outsource, um, this, the space for that. If in fact, it would give us a significant number of seats. And along with that, how many seats would be added is what would be the additional cost to renovate. But I think I would like to have that because as it stands, by just adding 63 seats, I could not justify for myself moving that up to number three. But if we were going to add a significant number of seats, you know, that, that would be different. And as Mrs. Randall pointed out, we are hundreds below capacity right up the road at Dixon Smith from Drew. So there is some relief available. But where we don't have relief is the middle of the county. And if you look at, um, Heim and Poole and Stafford Middle, that's, that's where, you know, that extra, um, red is showing up on, on the charts. So, you know, potentially there could be a trawl. And, and I'm not suggesting any of the R word. But, but at some point, um, when some schools are way over and some are way under, you know, we're going to have to have some movement. But for purposes of the, the capital projects list, you know, I would like to know, you know, what we could do there and what would be the cost. And I, um, I'm assuming there, there, there would be an additional rental space if we were to rent somewhere else. Cause I'm not aware of any of our buildings that have any, you know, significant amount of capacity that we can move that program to.
Just to sort of address the question about the day school, uh, we looked into that. Our preliminary estimates are we would gain four classrooms. So we're talking 84 more seats in capacity. So it's not a tremendously large number. Uh, again, besides new schools as a way to gain capacity, uh, there are also additions. And one of the conversations that we'll have internally is how big should our middle schools be? Does a middle school, does middle school additions make sense? So we're going to explore other options, you know, a multitude of options. And I just want, and bring back our best thinking to get your feedback.
How many seats are, um, are utilized at Stafford High School for the day school program there?
I'm going to have to, I don't know it off the top of my head. I'll have to get back to you on that. I'm sorry.
You guys don't know?
I can't remember. It's in that, it's in that corner.
I can see where it is.
Yeah.
All right. I'll, I'll look forward to hearing the back on that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I, I think that 80, while itself 80 doesn't sound like a lot, 80 compared to the 63 that we're adding here along with the, you know, eight. How much, how many millions? 20, almost $28 million to add, you know, renovation, which I know is needed, but to add 63 seats. If we could add 63 plus 80, that would increase it by 125% of the 63 that we're adding. So it's all relative. It, that, that's a lot of seats. And that very well could, you know, help us get through the 10 years, you know, with the middle schools here. Because if you look at the, the numbers that you've given us, we're not quite at 100% capacity in 10 years. But we all know it's not, you know, evened out. So I, I, I would like to, to look at that if we could. I'm not suggesting it's going to be done and, you know, it's many, many years in the future. But it is, you know, thinking a little differently on how we're going to meet our needs.
So if I could summarize and, and as I said, I believe the board is asking for us to bring the top, the top four projects. Not that the other ones eliminate, but maybe they're on like a page two of, uh, future considerations or some other great wonderful term that we have. Realizing that middle school and elementary school capacity, we, we know we need to meet. The top four, we believe have to be met. But I do think some kind of asterisk or something with the Drew Middle School explaining, um, the examination. We are trying to go into, to see what we can use with what we have. But also making sure that we don't all of a sudden wake up one morning and there's nowhere for there to go, middle schools. Is that somewhat the thinking of the board, Ms. Randall?
I guess, I, I think I'm a little bit more in line with, um, Dr. Chase as far as switching in my mind priority, putting up Drew. The other thing that I, you know, working, having worked on the CIP committee prior to coming on, I kind of revert back to some of the thoughts that I had or we presented with that. In that, uh, with elementary school 18, in looking at our projections, um, I still think we're, we're going to be okay. But what I'm wondering is flip Drew up and think about maybe utilizing or renovating Hartwood for the use of extra early childhood education seats. And kind of just rethink that piece of the project of the Hartwood renovation and the early childhood special education. Because in, in Lionel, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but I'm looking at your page 37 projections in the elementary school. And I don't see elementary school, yeah, elementary school 18 isn't even on here for the additional seats that it would bring, correct?
That's correct.
And so, you know, I'm not the mathematician here, but if you pull off the Hartwood seats, add an ES 18, are we still okay if we needed to use maybe Hartwood for K1 twos? And then, you know, like a lower elementary, I know I'm really messing up all the discussions here. Sorry. That's what I'm good at. I bring the mud. Sorry. But I'm just thinking that if we can just think about it differently to where we can have the ES 18, which adds the seats, which we totally could use. But if we pull off Hartwood, use it as a lower elementary school, use the, renovate the classrooms for the additional early special education and have it still kind of satisfy us that way. So we're kind of putting two projects together and there's my mess. How about it?
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
I will.
So I'll add some mess to it. Um, I keep bringing up Garrison Vale. That's in the green at 67% capacity. I don't have a problem with, um, working on Hartwood, but, uh, we shouldn't be waiting. I, I think there's room there also that we need to take into consideration. If we need space to, to use, it's there. 67% capacity and, um, that should be used prior to, and I'm going along with Susan and, um, Dr. Chase, that we do need to move Drew up because I remember, um, we had in this discussion before, you could go back to some older documents where the ranking was not there and that I was promised that, that when it went across the street, but we were not at the table. And I understand that we are now. So you, you know what, you know, what order or no order that we're trying to attain here and what our priorities are. But the question I had was, um, I was looking at the years as be requested opening date. And, um, that 2028, is that an old date that we just kept on here? Because if there's urgency, this date could be, um, advanced. Because I was thinking that, weren't we supposed to do a review of Drew and come back and analyze it? And then just get the right date? Because I think, I don't think that happened. I don't think it happened.
No, staff hasn't gone through our internal process yet. So that's true. That has not happened yet.
7:02.
I don't really want anybody to hear me, but, um, we do want to, I mean, this was one of the things that did frustrate people in this building. That there's a timeline and can we try to meet the timeline? Cause they have to do their own calculations. So I, I guess i- if the school board wants to go with the four, um, just go with it. And then understand that next year you could just change it again. I mean, nothing is being built before 2025 and we don't even have a commitment to that. So, I mean, this is really the discussion. That's why I said earlier, and, and if we're not giving you the right data to do that, then we will. We just maybe need to be clear on what data you're looking for. I've just suggest that if you need some of these projects sooner, then you need, your role, in my opinion, is to advocate for it. And then the Board of Supervisors always say, no.
That's why I'm saying, look at the dates.
Yeah.
The, the date here is not, doesn't show urgency to me.
Right. So I think that is some of the information we would like to come. I believe that none of these projects are going to, um, be of surprise, um, to the Board of Supervisors as well. I do think we want to have the most up to date and best background information. I believe there's straw poll sort of agreement on the four and then saying as we move forward. And, you know, from my perspective, I think we need to look at high school seven potentially in a different look. However, if there are no other comments, I'm going to give the board a two minutes. And then we're going to start at, um, 7:07 or 7:08 to get started. All right? All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for all the great information.